Okay, we'll call the town's select board special meeting to order on January 23rd at 6:00 PM to go over the general budget. Okay, everybody have a copy of the general budget in front of them? And you should have the town and pound of general fund balance for 2018 also in front of you. With that said, we'll go right down this thing dirty. See that's a general, I got the road fund. Well, we're gonna do the road fund first?
You wanna take a last look over it, yeah, you're supposed to.
Alright.
Yes. Remember there were change, you made a couple changes last meeting.
Should I have something else, I have the road fund here.
You should have the road fund now.
And then you're gonna get the, we'll get the general.
That should be in here.
She's got.
This is the updated one, you have the updated.
122.
122.
Yeah. Okay, well then we'll get back to the general. Okay, basically what we added to this was a capital fund, if I remember correctly.
3,000.
Yeah, so it was half of the surplus at the end.
Yep. And...
It doesn't include the surplus.
I don't think, I don't think we changed anything other than that, we talked about a lot of things.
We added more money to the gravel purchase.
Okay.
Gravel sand, gravel purchase.
Linda?
What?
Might have popped us in the wrong line, I just gotta correct something, that's all. People's tandem, my eye just caught, people's tandem, capital project. I think my 8,000 ended up in the wrong line.
Yes, it did.
See, yeah, it did.
Just all of a sudden.
Yeah, it just popped out, yeah, you're right. So I'm gonna change, it doesn't change bottom line, it's just in the wrong line.
Okay, so it's the same thing across the line, it's just gonna move to a different spot.
Yeah, see, this is why we go over them again.
Alright.
So where's the next, you go to the actual?
And how much did we add to the gravel, 30?
Yes, to make it a total of 75.
Okay. Any other major changes other than that?
No.
That was because of the possible gravel.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions or concerns about the road?
Well, well. The big increases.
Gravel purchase.
The gravel purchase.
Yep.
That potentially could be many years worth of.
Correct, in the long run it will save us money if we do it in a short step each year.
Four or five years worth.
Okay, here. The total difference in this year and last year now is, last time we looked.
50 or 60,000. Difference, total difference?
Yeah, from last year to this year, the bottom line.
From the actual to the new, it's only like 65,000, if I'm reading that right.
Are you talking about expenditures?
Am I saying the wrong thing Ellen?
Are you guys talking about the expenditures, the total expenditures?
Yes.
Yeah, it's the bottom line.
Bottom line of the total expenditures is last year, or the year we're in right now is 873.4 and we're at 964.6 right now. Whoa, that's almost 1,000.
But forgive me Ellen, cuz I'm... This says the actual last year was 899 and then the budget for 18 was 873.
Yeah, for 2017, but the budget we're in right now that we're working from is 873.4.
Right.
Last year actual was the FY17, closed as of June 30th.
Budget's up 91, 200.
Right, that's what happened.
Mm-hmm. The first time we looked at it without changing the gravel was like 53.
Okay, yeah, so I'm just saying.
We added, so that makes it.
That's why I'm wondering what the difference is, we added 30,000. Okay, okay, so that's the difference. Let me ask you if we can put the road to bed unless you got more questions about it?
I'm good with it.
Okay, so we'll get a motion to approve the road budget as is.
Some more.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion on it? All in favor say aye.
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 Right there, that one's done, let's do the general now. Should be in your packet, you had a general from last, it's 118.18, is that the date on it?
122, I think, oh wait a minute, yeah, 118, we didn't change anything.
Okay.
So do you have yours in there?
I don't think so. I have the road fund from 1228 unless it's with it.
No, I can give you a copy quick.
118?
Yeah.
Maybe this is all clumped together though Linda?
Mm-hmm.
118, right here.
Got it? Yeah, cuz we didn't do anything with it, the board just took it with them.
It just has information.
We took it.
Here's the corrected one Linda.
Yep.
Okay, if you go to the second page.
Guys, this is just the corrected one with the correct charge, with it in the correct charge line, that's all. The error I found.
Get rid of this one.
Yep, get rid of the one you had in your hand just a minute ago, okay? I know you've moved on to the general, but I was busy out there, I would appreciate if everybody would take time before your next meeting, before you actually when you approve all this, final approval, cuz they haven't, have they?
They just approved the road.
They just approved it.
The road.
I was just looking, Linda and I both looked these over millions of times, looking for the negatives in the right spots and no negatives in the right spots.
If there's an error, let us know Thursday, we're gonna approve the thing as a package.
Well, I'm counting on you guys to actually read them too.
Yeah, we are.
And if you see the negatives, like if you're reading down through and all of a sudden you see a number with no negative in it, you're like, oh, that should be a big, you can only look at these so many times, yes.
Yeah, I know, your eyes start going.
It's a road fund.
Alright.
Okay, great, sorry. Yep.
Okay, back to the general, second page. Going along, I'm not going through the revenue side of this, I'm gonna go to the actual budgeting piece that we put in to do with selectmen, that's where we start. And I don't see the selectmen thing changing, selectmen conferences, 500, you wanna leave it at that? It was 629, but 129 bucks.
Alright, wait, let me get your care here.
We passed all the transfers, didn't we?
We passed everything.
How does that show up?
That's what I asked you today. You said the breakdown is gonna show up in what we write, cuz the 8,000 was just...
Yep.
That's what I tried there, or yesterday.
Yesterday.
Yeah, that's how I'm thinking, I mean, it doesn't all go back to the taxpayer, but we're using 8,000 of it.
8,000 of it.
Into the other one, that's the only way I could figure that out, I don't know, we haven't done it in so many years.
We haven't done it in so long that I'm trying to remember how that works. Okay, that was my only question.
And I'm still, I'm still gonna look into that.
Is this from the undesigned?
Yeah, in the road.
Yeah, just how to, how we show it.
So, I only have so many lines, so in the road, you guys wanted to give 8,000 to the capital project if it passes and then the other 80, 8300 to the taxpayers, so from undesigned surplus, 16,000 is going into the budget as a revenue, 8,000 is coming out as an expense. If they pass it, if not, that 8,000 will end up in undesigned fund again.
Yes.
Okay, but that's the only way I could figure out where to put it, is in the actual from undesigned surplus, that's where it's going, it's going in there, cuz it's not a designated.
And then when we write the ballot article, it will say, it will include the 8,000 from undesigned.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's what we did before.
Everything has gotta break down, right?
When it's actually written.
Yeah, because we did that before, we said from undesigned funds, or from the capital fund, whenever we move something, we say whatever it's coming from.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, everybody on the...
If there is a problem with that, I will let you know Thursday, there's some other way I can do it, I think that's it.
General.
So we're back to the general.
Second page. You go down where it says selectmen. Okay, and if you look for selectmen, and it says administrative assistant wages and the other things in it, there's no change to the bottom line, but down there, selectmen's not gonna change, and people can change their salaries, the auditors or the voters. Conference, we're saying 500 bucks, stay. That's when we go to one of these seminars.
Might be another stupid question, but alright, go ahead.
And you go to wages.
Right, why did that go down?
Why did walk down?
Wages, administrative assistant.
Because it got broke down.
It breaks out the vacation holiday.
Vacation and stuff, the way it's supposed to be broke out.
They weren't broken, when you saw it in the 30s and the years before, that's because we hadn't broke down the vacation.
It was hourly now, so it's broke down.
Makes it look like you're taking a cut in pay.
But if you follow it down thoroughly.
But if you add a backup, it's the same.
Oh, okay.
Sick pay and holiday vacation.
Now, and I assume we're practicing the same as we did last year, we're not budgeting for pay raises, but we're gonna give pay raises in July, which is...
That's what we've done in the past.
That's what we did last year.
That's what you've done in the past, but what you had us do is put in whatever anybody submitted for in your budget, you wanted it as people submitted it, so you have to go through each individual line and knock it back, if you wanna knock it back, cuz you wanted to see, we go through this every year.
My...
So you have to...
Yeah, I understand and I remember.
That's why we asked you.
Henry telling me not to put nothing in there, and I agreed with it, only because when we put it in there, we ended up giving it to the people for sure, it was...
No, you didn't.
We did, we did, I know we did for some years, but I'm saying last year we did that. We turned around and I gave people what they had in it. I know they did that with the service.
No way you did, I just try.
I did it with some people.
But, but, you can either budget or not budget, but you're supposed to present the budget as is, so if you think you're gonna give raises, you should be budgeting for it.
That's what, I remember going through that argument last year and then not winning.
If you're not gonna give raises, then don't budget for it, but if you think there's a chance you're gonna give raises, you're supposed to budget for them, you're supposed to budget, that's why the road has gone up so much, because you budgeted for what you think you are going to do next year, instead of flat cutting everything and making a budget.
Did we go up on their wages?
Do you have a five man crew now?
Yeah, so that's the only thing.
It reflects it.
Yeah, so that reflects the fifth man, but it doesn't show any hourly wage change.
No, but it reflects a five member crew.
So, so you have to decide what you're gonna do, cuz if you're not, then we have to go make sure that we hit everybody's line and drop it back, because you told us to submit, that's why we asked, you wanted this stuff filled in.
Well, looking at almost the goal, I guess.
And the other thing is, we're running an ad for a town administrator and we don't have budgeted no money for that. What do we do in that case?
Well, you're gonna come back to that and have a line, I guess. But at this point, what do you wanna do with this, right here, we're at administrative assistant? Wanna push anything up, or are you gonna wait and do something different? Give, whatever you give in July and that'll be it. And it'll change, it'll be overspent probably.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I don't want it to be overspent, but I don't wanna say we're not gonna give a raise either.
Well, I think we're gonna give a raise, we just don't know how much. That's why when you budget this process and then...
It's hard to know how to do it.
So treasurer, your advice on that would be?
You're supposed to budget.
What you perceive you're gonna spend.
What you perceive you're gonna spend. Gonna do raises and can't, so, and yet, I mean, you guys always kinda just do your thing, so I don't know, I can't really vocalize, cuz I don't always agree with the way you guys do stuff, so it's not my, it's your, the board's decision.
What we've done in the past is we added money, then we turned around and paid the money that we put in the line.
Right.
And then other times we get, we've not budgeted money and we paid more money at the end of it. So the question I ask the board is, do you wish to, and this was what I went through last year, do you wish to show an increase on your line now, or are you just gonna turn around?
Wait and see if everybody...
July, you give whatever raise you get.
Let's say we put it in now.
One second.
Yeah, wanna put it in now, what are you thinking, 2%, 3%, 5%, 10%? What do you wanna give them?
It doesn't mean you can't change your mind.
I know.
Point is, you should, if you think you're going to give a raise, you should have it in the budget. I did try to argue that way back when you were told not to put any in.
I know. Didn't get anywhere though. Some of those people are pretty strong.
So if we put in for 5%, we can always back down, right, not give them that, if you put it in the budget?
Right.
Yeah, sure you can.
So why don't we just do that?
You know, is 5% a realistic amount these days? I guess is where I'd argue with, you know, I think more, you're more in the range of 2 to 2.5%.
Yeah, 2.5 is realistic.
I'd say we use more like a 2%.
That's why I say if you put 5, you can always come back down, you don't have to give them 5.
I'll do 4.
But the people will be charged 5.
But the people, but we're gonna pay taxes on whatever you put in here. That's how, so the townspeople are gonna pay on that 5% if you're, you see what I'm saying?
And they're gonna ask you on the floor, I would anyways, and say, hey, why'd you give everybody a 5% pay raise?
Mm-hmm.
If they catch it.
And I would say, I don't get that much.
So, but 2%, you know, today what you see is a lot of 1, 1.5, 1 and 3/4 or 2% pay type pay raises, you don't see much over there. So I think a 2% pay raise is fine, that's where I'm at.
And averages to the 3.
Yeah. So everywhere where there's a salary line, except for the selectman line, 2% is what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so that takes care of all our...
So I go...
The hourly pay.
Not, no, you guys need to give me numbers, I'm not gonna go play mathematician, I wanna know what number you want in there. If you want 2%, get a calculator and give me a number to pop in there. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
Every line that's a wage line, that's your decision, not my decision to come up with a 2% number. Well, this is, what's in there is what they're basically getting right now from 2018.
Play okay with it. You're looking for what we paid them.
Yeah, but well, so last year, it, what I'm trying to say is, last year was 27,950, this year, go up 2% from 27,950 is what I'm trying to tell you, go up 2% on each.
Yeah, because how are you gonna, even if this is...
Let's go on each, on each thing.
On each thing.
On each thing, because you're gonna, even if you do this, take the hour.
If you don't do the hourly, you're gonna go by, because you're not guaranteed that's what you're gonna do.
550 dollars.
So, so, that would be... Which is... You can just do 550.
Okay.
Which is 28, which is 28.5. So you put it to 28.5 and then 2% of 250 and 2% of 2600, or whatever, 2% of 2600 because vacation and holiday is all the new wage, see what I'm saying?
Right, that sounds like something that's gonna take some time.
So let's go 2700 and 1500, I'm gonna round it for now guys, you see what I'm saying?
So can we just put next to all of this?
I'll give you your printouts, yeah, I'm guessing, I'm gonna round it up a little bit. I'm not gonna go through and calculate for you guys every 2%.
But we can do that later on, after tonight.
You're gonna do that when you set pay wages and juniors alive.
You just need to come, you just need to give me a number in there.
You need to put a number in there.
It says 20, if it said 27,950, I just needed a rough idea that it's gonna go to 28.50, so the 2600, you put to 26.50, you see what I'm saying? Cuz it's not a lot of money, and you put the 14.50 up to 1500 and you put the 500 up to 550. Now you're where you need to be.
Yes, your arguments last year was, it's easier just to put a money on that line and what you think it's gonna be and turn around and...
Give whatever.
Give what you're gonna give, but I would say that, I think 2% is reasonable, I don't know how you wanna calculate and put it on each line, but...
Well, we can do that afterwards.
Yeah, I'm just writing 2% next.
That's right.
Next to each one.
We still need something to look at Thursday night.
You're right, you're right.
So if I don't have numbers in there, that doesn't do you any good. Just let me up at the 50 bucks for each line, it's fine.
Do 2%?
Are you understanding what I'm saying?
Yes, yeah, it's 2% above the bottom line, that's what you do, where you wanna add it.
Probably be the easiest at the moment.
Mm-hmm.
Because at that point, you at least should know what the total figure would be.
So 891 be the total there, that's 2%.
Of the 44.
Yep, that's the 44.
Well, and that's including health insurance?
Yes, it was.
And you don't wanna include health insurance?
Yeah, yeah, so you take the 11.3 away, that's why we need to get...
I don't know why you didn't just let me up each line 50 bucks. That's the same concept.
Do it.
I did.
Yeah.
I did.
Yeah, we're just...
I did, okay, let's move on.
Move on.
Alright.
Okay, selectmen expenses.
Can I ask what that is?
It's 4,000 bucks.
No.
And 2,000 for the other.
What do we put into selectmen expenses, what would that be, an example?
Well, if I had to order flowers for somebody...
On advertisements?
Advertisements.
Job opening advertisements in papers and stuff.
Postage is separate, that's right.
$2,000.
Where there's no other place in the budget to put it.
Alright, okay.
They kinda get lumped into one place.
So we've already agreed that the town administrator ad will probably be around $2,000, so we may need to put more in here.
Make your suggestion, what do you think, 4,000, double it?
There's a lot of bids that were placed in here, we did a lot of bids.
Now we're gonna have some more.
Yeah, there was a lot of bids that were in here, I know there were.
So, and if you, almost 5,000 in 2017, who knows where we are now?
When you gave the gift card, it came from here, there was no place else to take it from.
So it's almost like an office thing, like, um...
No, it's a select board expense only.
And we do, we do...
We're at 447 dollars, right?
Right now, we're just January, well, not July now, so we haven't spent a whole lot.
But if we're gonna spend $2,000, at least for that.
If it was at 400, that would be the gift cards, that's what that would be.
But then we got, is there any expenses, like when we go out to bid and stuff like that, those expenses that come out of this? Cuz we've got some projects this year we'll be going to bid. So, yeah, I would up it.
If I can't take it out of some, out of a line that makes sense to me, like building maintenance or something like that, it's like you got a mold assessment charge and I applied that to the building because it's a building issue.
So where does...
Sometimes I have to make decisions of where some things get taken from.
All the Christmas decorations and stuff for the town, that comes out of what?
Grounds.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say that it's more to do with the advertisements we do, with the bidding we do, our fees.
A lot of it is your bids and RP costs, that kind of thing, they're huge.
And you're gonna do, and you're doing some of that right now with the VLCT, where we, you know, we basically gave you authorization for, spent 2,000 bucks.
Right.
A spin already.
It's already spent, that's why I'm saying.
So I recommend we go back to what we budgeted in 2017, go back to 4,500.
Right, I, I agree.
It's reasonable.
Okay, pay access TV, 50's fine, selectmen postage, is that okay?
That looks fine to me.
Okay, salaries and wages for the treasurer, did we go up 2% there?
More.
I'm okay with it.
It would be 36.
Yeah, that's fine, 2.5, or less, actually, to put in with 2,000. So everything in that line, you okay with that, folks? Treasurer line, we'll move on. Salaries for the clerk, now this is another one.
That's another one that we've got to think about because if we're gonna run a ballot article on whether or not to keep the fees and hire a town clerk.
So salaries for the clerk's gotta be different, but you got...
Only if...
A vote.
Only if it passes.
Only if it passes, correct. So if it passes and they don't have the money, we're screwed, excuse me.
Well, you can put in...
Well, you're not really screwed because you're gonna be keeping the fees, you're not really screwed.
Right, cuz the fees will go...
It's gonna offset the revenue, will offset the revenue from the, it's just you won't have it in the budget to offset the difference, but it will, but you'll be keeping the fees, is that my understanding? Cuz I don't know what you guys are doing, so...
Fees and other charges that are collected by the clerk would go to the town and they, they would be paid a salary and benefits.
Okay, so...
Because you would be an employee of the town at that time.
Right.
I found approval from the ballot articles.
So, I think what Julie did right now, by the looks of it, cuz her and I talked about this a little bit, I think maybe Linda too, is she just did the stipend plus as if she was gonna be an elected official or whomever got in would be an elected official and kept their...
Recording fees.
Recording fees.
Yeah, cuz it wasn't, I don't think she knew any other way to, to think about it.
The only way you can.
No.
No, and, and I mean, she, we did put in an insurance line.
Well, the key, I guess, here with us, the way I look at this, if the bottom line covers what we would do, and that's where it is, the bottom line is...
Right, and see where it says recording fees clerk, cuz that money comes in and then goes back out as, as wages, so it's kind of in there, you see what we're saying? So if you decide to keep all the wages, you still have it budgeted another 22,000 as wages.
Yeah.
So that would be 22, 30...
33.
33,000 if you were giving somebody a...
I lost you.
Okay, so when you're looking at the town clerk, you see 11,000, so that's a stipend right now, okay? And then the assistant clerk, it has nothing to do with the town wages, okay? And then if you go down to recording fees clerk, 100-3250, so that's 22,000 cuz all the recording fees come in and then go back out as payroll now, so that's another wage line, so it's 22 and 11 is 33,000 in the wage line. It's just broke out separately, so you are technically budgeting for wages, no matter what you do, you have 33,000 plus, plus the $7,000 insurance line.
And the way we're wording this is that the fees and other charges would come to the town, so you're looking at another 15, 13, about another 28 on top of that, so when you're done, you're looking at 35 or so, which is what we expected it to be.
Right, well, the animal license expense to the state, marriage license expense is to the state, that's money that gets paid out to the state, that's not money that...
Okay, there is no money that comes in?
Yes, it's under the revenue line.
It's under the revenue.
Okay, so, and actually, that just reminded me, let me see, 100, it should say 20, yep, recording fees clerk, I had to make sure that I offset it over on this side for the recording fees clerk, cuz it's money in. because it's money in, money out.
Okay, so basically, yeah, I think we're covered if we leave it the way it is. Because you don't know what's gonna happen to something to voters.
Okay.
All right, and if they voted down, we've got...
If it's voted down, you have it set up to do whatever you wish to do, right?
Okay.
So either way, you do have money in a way, you have some money in a wage line, so you're not leaving yourself hanging with no money.
That's right. Okay. Everybody okay with that? We'll move on to the next. BCA? Did she say that was enough money for elections and all that stuff? She put a thousand in?
Yeah, she put it up a little bit.
Yeah, because you got November, right, you got election coming up this year, or next year?
I think it's next year. We just did presidential?
No.
Last November.
Last November, we did presidential.
Yes.
Year before.
Year before.
Oh, it's been two years, all right?
Trump's been in, yeah.
Oh. Oh, yeah, that's right, because we just were in January now. My God, I've lost time.
So she might, there might be a, a two-year election.
Yep.
So that's good, I just wanted to make sure you had enough.
But even our March election, she needs money for our March election, right?
Yeah, but she's got it in there.
She's got it in.
She did the same thing in, under election expenses, she upped it, like she should, she did good.
No, that's good.
All right.
Election wages. She went more in line with what we've been paying out, that looks, that's good. Election supplies? We had eight thousand before, we're down to two thousand?
That's because that happened because of not knowing how many ballots to order.
Yeah, there was a big...
Ordered way too many ballots, but now they know what they need to order, so that won't hap, that will never hit eighty-four hundred again.
There was a problem with ordering them or something, right?
And stuff, yeah, things went kafui. We did get some money back too, so, everything is leveled out.
Election postage, okay. Motor machine fund, you don't need any more than that, so... Yeah, all set with that, we'll move on to the auditors.
Okay.
Wages to the auditors, thirty-seven hundred? That's what we budgeted the year before.
We only had one active auditor?
Right.
And we're gonna have none?
At least not running. Oh, boy. Okay. Auditor's expense? Six hundred. CPA audit fund? Okay, are we still on the contract, or we go up this year?
We're still on the contract.
We're still under, we only did one year with them so far.
And how many years we...
Three.
We have three.
Okay. So we're okay there then?
To live and learn, Ellen.
Ellen, don't you think we oughta raise that a little bit, because they're gonna audit the town clerk's office this time? And it's never been included before.
It's never been included, do we know how much it is?
Offhand, no, but I just noticed it.
We can, there's also money...
I think that's...
There's also money in the, um, there is money in the audit fund?
Yeah, that's where I'm talking about, the audit fund is where it would go.
Right, but there's, but we do have extra money in this CPA audit fund, but you wanna up it like to seventy-five hundred?
Yep.
Yeah, we have fifteen.
Let's do that, that way at least we're covered by, for some of it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because I thought we went out and asked them, and they did come back, and it was pretty high.
Yeah, I don't remember what it was.
Don't either.
It was high. Okay, so we're upping that to seventy-five audit fund, okay? Anything else on that line? Okay, town report? Got a hundred and fifty bucks when it looks like it's costing us twelve hundred?
He lowered that for a reason, why? Do we know why? Something about not posting them or...
Didn't we have an insert on the town office and a lot of postage during, when we were voting on the new town office?
Something, yeah.
Was that all that a big expense? Because he had to print those things and...
Well, what some towns have done is, is...
They just put them on.
They haven't sent...
I think he's gonna put it online.
I think he's just putting it online and not...
I think he's going online.
That's what a lot of towns did, they'd put it up on the web.
That'd be great.
And if anything, they sent a postcard, which is a lot different than sending...
Right, to let them know to go online. You print some books, he prints, has some books printed, but we don't post them.
They can pick them up there.
Put it on the web, on the line, yeah.
Yeah, and you put it on the web, but I would go for the first year of the wage, mailing out a postcard with the webpage and saying, this is how you get your, if you wanna look at, look at it, go here. So I would put some money, and maybe a hundred and fifty dollars, was that, I just don't know what it cost.
I don't know about that.
What's it cost to send out a postcard?
Yeah, you might wanna up that a little, can we do like five hundred on that, and see how that works?
Yeah, I'm just thinking that one year we should at least notify people.
I agree with that.
And, you know, there's gonna be a lot of old people that don't, don't go on the computer and on the web and everything, and it's gonna wanna see the town report.
Well, what it'll say on the bottom of that, or if you wish to pick one up, go to the town office.
Come to the town office, because we'll still print.
Yeah, we'll still print some of that thing.
So we need a little bit more money.
Yeah, I think it should, five hundred to just see how the postage goes.
Yeah, because a postcard is what, then it'll all say the same thing.
Because he left the expenses up to thirty-eight hundred, so that's...
Yeah, so he's gonna print some anyways.
Yeah.
And we'll... I know this is another crazy question, but town report expenses, when we pay our webmaster to put stuff on, does that come out of there? No?
Comes out of the website line.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I guess the question is, when he says town report expenses, is that, is he saying the print? Because that's what we're spending, it's about three thousand something.
That's what I would think, is mainly the printing and...
Well, on the postage, I think he changed it, because there was...
And he had to mail them all out and everything.
Yeah, but there was a way they mailed them that basically treated them all like they were all exactly the same, it's a lower-cost postage.
Yeah, bulk rate.
So maybe he found a way to do that, I don't know, without talking to him. But basically...
How about we'll star that, I was wondering if maybe he made fifteen hundred in there for postage, and it could be a typo, who knows? We'll star it, and we'll check on it, okay?
Okay, yeah, I think...
So we can move on.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I don't even know if he put anything in there, if I just copied from last year.
Yeah, let them know that we're talking about the webpage and that, and only printing a few, because he might come up with some new numbers. Okay, listers?
We don't have any.
Well, hopefully we'll have some. I would leave that the same.
I agree.
Um, Barb gave you what she estimated when she turned her first letter in, and those are the same figures that...
That show up here now, right?
That Ellen put in.
Yeah, that's why I leave it where it is, where it's showing.
So Barb is officially done?
Yes.
Okay, she's done, and can I get an copy of that?
Yes.
Okay, state listers, head reimbursement, uh, maintenance, all that stays the same? Okay, zoning administrator stays the same...
Don't give them anything, decrease that one, yeah.
Cut it back.
Decrease it. Hundred bucks.
Way too much, isn't it?
Yeah.
He doesn't do anything anyway.
One more year, I think. One more year. That's it, I think I gotta find that too, can I find somebody to do that? We're getting less and less people allowed to do it. All right.
Don't say that, we have to encourage people to come in.
DRB? Secretary wages, that's good, salaries and wage, DRB?
Should read that.
Hey, Ellen, how about why don't you look at Dave's, what he submitted, and see if you can understand what he wrote? He says something about postage underbudgeted, and I'm like, well, why did he write what he wrote? Did he mean to write fifteen hundred?
Oh, and then he did eighteen, oh, he did twelve fifty, and I didn't catch it. So he wants twelve fifty there, not one fifty.
Okay.
See, eighteen, nineteen, I betcha I did this number here, and CPA, he did up, he did up it to the seventy-five hundred, so see, I just missed his, uh, and printing, he lowered it to thirty-five hundred.
Okay.
So I, that's, that's my eyeball.
And what did he put on the other twelve?
So he did, um, he did thirty-seven hundred wages, six hundred expense, seventy-five hundred CPA, and postage, he did twelve fifty.
Twelve fifty.
And then he did thirty-five hundred for printing.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thanks for that.
Sounds more in line.
Yeah.
Okay, I still think we oughta find a, see if we're just gonna do it, whether the webpage and only print a few, it might cost us less.
Yeah, I think he's presenting it as if we're still doing the same program.
Yep.
Which is fine.
All right, back to, where were we, planning board?
So you have many eyes on this.
Mm-hmm.
DRB, I think, looks good.
Thank you, Linda.
Planning board, planning board is...
Planning board. Oh, you got, that's because you got your town plan.
That's right.
The town plan, you got a bunch of praying and stuff you gotta do.
Yep.
So, okay, it's fine. Then we get down to...
Okay, here's the office building and ground and all the stuff that I was asking you about.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, capital fund? Where were we with this now?
We increased it by six.
Up it'll fund you at thirty-five hundred. You've spent thirty-five hundred in the capital fund this year? So far.
Which isn't shown on this fund balance sheet yet, but...
It's not gonna show on your comparative budget. Well, it depends if you've spent it after twelve fifteen or not, Nelson, you've got the fund balance sheet.
Twelve eighteen is the one I got.
So it says that you spent thirty-five hundred dollars? Says so right there?
Yep.
Yep.
Are you at thirty-five hundred and eight dollars and ninety-eight cents?
Just the thirty-five hundred, I don't...
I don't know. I know. Well, that's a credit, I'll just keep all her now.
That's why she's the treasurer.
I was gonna say, if it's thirty-five thousand over there, why was this eighty-one, it should've been less? Okay, so there's eighty-one in.
Now do you feel better?
Yes.
How great.
Feel like we actually have money.
Enjoy it.
Yeah, well, maybe that put along, now that we gotta fix this building. Okay, uh, so the capital fund, we're talking about sixteen, is that okay, or you want more or less? We got a lot of work to do.
We had sixteen, and the, and the actual spent was ten, is that right?
Yeah, it was last year.
Mm-hmm.
Now we've spent thirty-five hundred this year in the budget we're in right now.
Gotta remember, out of the capital fund came the, the money to give to planners for town plan, came out of the capital fund, was ten grand.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
So our total in that fund right now?
So...
Is eighty-one thousand.
We gave them ten grand out of the capital fund?
We're gonna add sixteen thousand to it.
Yeah.
BRC.
So, if I said ninety-seven, why don't we put another three on it?
That was the ten we spent, right?
Why don't we make it nineteen?
Okay.
And seventeen, yeah.
Make it nineteen hundred.
And here we're making it nineteen?
So you wanna make it nineteen now?
Yep. If you don't spend anything between the time it comes, and let's see where we're at. I'll spend some of that, I'm sure. Municipal office fund, and what comes out of this?
Nothing right now.
Nothing right now.
Because you disbanded the whole...
You shelved the project.
Yeah.
Okay, but we could use that for our, um, mold problem?
Nope.
No?
No.
It's only to build a new office.
The question is, is do you wanna put thirty thousand in reserve to build a new office this year? Or do you wanna take some of that money and fix your mold problem? We just put another three thousand up there.
What you're saying is, don't put it in...
I'm saying put twenty in.
My feeling is, we need to continue adding to that fund, however...
Well, I think twenty's fine, I think we should take ten of it and put it up above.
And how much do we have in that fund right now, total? Yeah, I thought we had two hundred. I think if we have a problem with this building, we should use some of this money...
We can't use that money.
No, no, I know we can't use it, but I think now it's right, put twenty in and...
Put twenty in and add ten to that nineteen, so you got twenty-nine.
Add ten to the nineteen.
That's what I think.
Even if we were gonna...
We gotta fix it.
The, the problem, the problem I see fixing it is, is it's gonna be a huge cost.
But you still have to fix it until you don't...
I understand that, I understand that, but I just think we need to be prepared to do, you know, to put people in temporary situation if we're gonna...
But still, it's gonna come out of the municipal office fund, because you disbanded the whole project that voters voted down.
It's gonna cost three thousand dollars to address the asbestos in the rear safe.
Oh, that's what I'm saying.
You know?
What I'm saying is, if we're...
Still put money in the funds to build a new office.
We put twenty into that, take ten now that you know you're gonna spend...
Put it into building maintenance.
Into the building, yeah, this capital fund or building maintenance, wherever you wanna put it. Building maintenance could even be the, the line.
That's actually where you should put it, then it's designated for that specific purpose.
And that's what it needs to go to, it needs to go to this building.
Because if I was paying bills, I'd be taking it from the building...
Maintenance.
Maintenance, and we'd be doing some kind of, you know, fund balance change at the end of the year.
So, so what do you think, throw twenty thousand in there, and put ten in the building maintenance?
You're gonna have to at least have twenty, because your carpet before, when you were talking, was eight thousand, and it's probably cost you ten thousand underneath to do it right.
So you're just gonna put twenty in and only ten on the other?
No, he's saying up it another ten, the building maintenance, another ten.
You're gonna have to do twenty thousand minimum to do this, I think.
And we have ten there now, so if we put another ten, we have twenty.
And I'm guessing, because you haven't got anybody to give you your actual price yet.
All right, let's...
And leave nineteen in the capital, and twenty in the...
Yeah, nineteen there, twenty in the municipal office fund, and twenty in...
Twenty in the maintenance.
In the building maintenance.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Shelter wages. We have our guys doing that now, right?
Yeah, we don't need that anymore. This is, it's working better with the highway department.
And the janitor, janitor wages, we're doing the same?
So we went to twenty, twenty thousand here, and here we went to what?
Twenty thousand, twenty. Office supplies, four thousand? Janitorial supplies?
Why do, why do we have janitorial supplies, we're still buying stuff and like...
We have to buy, we have to buy bags, we have to buy our own hand soap, we have to buy toilet paper, we have to buy paper towels.
So that doesn't come out of office supplies, that comes out of...
That comes out of janitor supplies. Office supplies is just paper, it's mostly coffee paper, um, the water that we get from Sand Springs comes out of that.
Ink, ink stuff.
Ink comes out of it.
Toners. Okay, so...
Where do we get the money for the filters? Where do we get the money for the filters?
Building maintenance.
On building maintenance, and that's what, every five years?
For those filters, um...
They tell you?
They last like a certain number of hours, I bought some, I think last year, and we still have some backups.
I was gonna say, they tell you, they gotta be changed.
But they're expensive, they're, they're about seven, what, they do now?
Don't they tell you?
Yeah, when you...
Yeah, light comes on.
At about seven hundred bucks a piece.
Oh, yeah? Come on, they're happy. They're gonna take everything out of the air, what do you want?
But that comes out of the building maintenance.
Okay, that's what I had the question.
Office equipment maintenance.
Now, this building maintenance is where we're gonna put that other money, or no?
Yes, that's gonna be twenty.
It's gonna be twenty. Okay, in the office maintenance, there's where you're going to see your copier lease.
Office equipment, yep.
Yes.
That's where the computers and things like that.
Any word on that, Linda, that should be secure any time, right?
Um, he said seven to ten days.
From...
Last week, whenever Nelson signed.
Yeah, it's on a week, is that on the weekend or do I come in during the week?
Last weekend or something, so it's a couple of weeks.
Okay, office equipment. Bank service charge, fifty. V L C, casualty insurance, eighteen. Legal fund, forty thousand.
This is the town lawyer?
Mm-hmm.
Now, a question, when you say legal fund like that, if she's using the V L C T lawyer, does it come out of legal fund?
That's what I was just gonna say.
It would come out of legal.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Any legal recording for the town of Powell comes out of that?
Mm-hmm.
Anything that Ellen needs to do, a tax sale comes out of that, small claims.
Anything that happens.
Yeah, you're gonna want that, you, we're doing one here, town, we put in last year and if you put in this year. We, at one point, we had substantial money, but, uh, one year you can spend whatever you got, that's for sure.
I think the, the legal on the town administrator, I think, it's gonna be less than a thousand, I've heard. It's the advertising that's gonna be the big thing.
Ground maintenance, has he gone up?
We haven't gone out to bid yet, but yes, it will go up.
This year we go to bid?
Yes.
You're gonna do another, you're gonna have to do another cemetery this year, too.
What's the bid, you said, we're gonna go out to bid for all the cemeteries?
We have to do one across the region right now.
Well, they asked about it, but they haven't come in and...
They didn't come in for us to prepare our budget for.
We don't pay for it till they ask.
Yeah, they're gonna have to come in and formally request it.
I think we better increase it.
If we do that, you know...
Do you wanna make it thirty?
Yes, you better, because I think we...
Um, you already know that you're not gonna have the same, probably the same price, same quotes for...
Yes, because he...
If you look back, we've been doing some work in our cemeteries.
Yes.
Some added work there.
Yeah, there's more to do.
Yeah, there's more to do, you're right.
Office electrical, thirty-one hundred. Fuel for the office, went from four down to twenty-five hundred.
Question on the electricity, you think this new copier is gonna, does Chuck think it's gonna increase our electricity or make it better?
How would he know, I don't know.
He would know.
The rates are all going up, so...
He would know, it might be more energy efficient than what we're using with, with different things, so...
Yeah, but it's like a refrigerator, it's more energy efficient, you know, you're lucky if you get fifty dollars a year out of it, more, you're done, saved. You do save, but it's not enough for an individual. All right, moving on, fuel for the office. Uh, the reason it's down is because we're not spending as much, so...
Petroleum for it down.
Yep.
Spent five hundred and seventy dollars so far.
We spent...
Yeah, this is a cold winter, this year.
We spent how much?
Five hundred and seventy.
Already. You got another month to go, two months, month and a half.
Five sixty-nine, thirty-six.
You could spend, certainly spend twenty-five hundred.
Cold winter.
All right, twenty-five hundred, telephone for the office, three thousand.
Uh, what about the purchase of the new...
Up out of the building equipment.
Okay.
This is what we paid for the service.
Okay.
Office sewer use fee, we know what that says, okay.
Why is that going down, though?
'Cause we got rid of the property. No longer have the mobile home that we were paying for.
North Bonneville.
Oh, right, okay. I mean, that was under this, okay.
It's going higher every day.
Yeah.
Sick pay in general, okay, good. Fire alarm, we still doing this?
Yeah, what was that gonna cost us?
So, the, I know, uh, a month ago, we talked about, um, the fire departments are gonna be coming in to talk about purchasing an repeater system. And the idea was that, um, each department was gonna pay for a third, and they were gonna be asking the town to, um, put in a third. Um, it looks like it's gonna be between six and seven thousand dollars per, per party.
Per third?
Per third.
Per year?
Uh, one-time deal. That's a new tower out here, at the fire station, a forty-nine foot tower.
Why aren't we running a ballot article for this repeater and tower?
Because of first, six thousand dollars.
What's six times three?
Well...
It's eighteen thousand bucks.
It's something that's been in the works, it just came together, the, actually, the meeting was last night.
Because I think that people would, you know, it's gonna improve all the service for response and the rest. I think it's reasonable, it's just that...
I think there was also talk about reimbursement too for the grant.
Yeah.
So, but the point is, we need to, we need to move on, and, um, the, uh, we've already invested some money into a, uh, into a license to the F C C.
Well, I guess the question is, is this something that we as a town can run as a ballot article? Just write it down as a ballot article for the full amount?
I would think, if we had, if we had enough time to do that.
Well, you know what it is, right, it could show the town of Powell, spend X amount of dollars for, uh, improvement of the response time from our emergency services by buying whatever this thing is.
Good. Then I, then I suggest, if, if that's the thought, we can have, uh, the, uh, emergency management coordinator come Thursday night and do a formal presentation, talk about it, and we could finalize the idea then.
But the reason why I say that is because you're gonna have it in your budget.
You're right, you're right, you're right, you're right.
They're gonna have it in their budget.
Yeah.
And then we're gonna have it in our budget. Just bundle them so they know what you're spending the money on, be upfront to the people.
Good.
We're gonna buy a, and I think that, that lets people know, you and I both know that people see these numbers that these people, the departments get each year, and they say, what are you spending it on? Let's tell them what we're spending it on and what we need. We all know we need their service, anybody that's got a cellphone around town knows it's a spot where you can't get.
So what you're saying is, we gotta add eighteen thousand under ballot articles?
Well, I could be, it's, it's eighteen to twenty thousand.
Well, you gotta pick a number that I gotta put in.
Right, sure.
What do you want?
Well, let's, let's figure twenty, and we'll, we'll, we can have a definite on Thursday then.
And what do you wanna call this?
Uh, emergency repeater system.
The P D's gonna still dispatch you guys, yeah, okay.
So basically, it's a new radio frequency with a new, uh, a new radio and a new antenna and a computerized repeater. That would improve, hopefully improve communications.
That's right, it, it'll improve overall communication and response. And I think anybody out there, as this generation is getting older, will be glad to have you respond as quickly as possible.
So we would, the two other departments, they're both fire departments?
Yes, they are.
Not risk, just glad at all?
No. They went with the upgrade about ten years ago, it worked very well. That's totally separate.
Yep. No, I think this is, it makes a lot of sense to do it. I just, we put it in our budget line, you put it in yours, and who knows if one of them goes down and we lost it. Let's make it happen, it's needed, that, that, let's make it happen. I have a staff standing up defending it.
Good.
The other departments don't either.
Okay.
I think it's pretty important. All right, so where are we putting it?
It's gonna be going over to the ballot articles. At the very end.
I've been giving it a little right now.
On page seven.
Twenty thousand.
Put twenty thousand in, and it's emergency repeater system.
What did you say?
We're gonna put it on page seven.
Yeah.
Okay. Ballot articles, where it says total ballot articles right above it, we're gonna add it right at the bottom. It's gonna be emergency repeater system.
This is the...
Yeah, you're on the expenditure report, that's why.
Yeah, Powell's one of the few departments that's not on the repeater.
You're on your comparative budget?
Yeah, I'm getting it.
Okay. You're gonna be putting that right in there. Twenty thousand right over there.
And wait, you don't have to worry about it in your budget, someone else, it's done.
Okay.
Well, it's the tax there's money, and I think it's a good piece of it.
I think it'll all stay there.
Yep.
Okay. What about the telephone charges we see here, they stay, they stay down?
They're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna use that same phone lines over there.
Fire dispatch service, still need that?
Yep.
Fire protection, from out rural, stays the same? All right, recreation department. They're still doing the program, right?
Yep.
Okay, that stays?
Yes.
Administration wages, E nine-one-one. Okay, staying the same as last year, shouldn't, this, we would, uh, wanna do the two percent on that?
I don't think you got it covered, because you got an increase there.
It's up to you guys.
It's going up five fifty, five hundred.
Well, our budget's same than the eighteen.
The F Y eighteen is the same.
Yeah, I'm just...
It'd go up sixty dollars, so if you would up it to four thousand.
Sixty dollars would be thirty-one hundred.
Or, I mean, thirty-one hundred, yeah, that's what I meant. Did I say four thousand?
Yes, you did.
You were pulling a Nelson over there, you need to stop that.
I'm tired, I'm sorry. Thank you, yeah, do you wanna up it to thirty-one hundred?
Yes.
I gotcha, Ellen, I gotcha.
Yeah, good thing, thanks, guys.
Okay, let's do that, contract service.
What is that?
Oh, that's the sheriff's department?
Sheriff's contract.
They, we're expecting them to go up or stay the same, according to this, we're staying the same?
We signed, we just signed a contract, and you're covered for this amount.
Okay, stays where it is. Animal control. This is what our man asked for?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
I heard really good things about what he did on the last problem we had.
Well, what I'm hearing...
He handled it very professionally and worked with Joel, and I heard he did a really good job.
Yeah, I've heard things are going good, too, I hear, though, his, uh, equipment could be improved on. His quarters up there where he has to hold these things for two or three days. So when you say this, uh, animal control expenses?
Mm-hmm.
You know, you might wanna talk about buying, uh, one of those fenced-in areas and a couple of pen, pens to put these animals in.
We could, you can, uh, you can buy that at Tractor Supply.
I think the one that we've discussed, Nelson, is, is over at the highway department.
They use it over there?
No, it was stored there.
Actually, no, it's at his house now.
How did he get there?
It was delivered there.
Oh, okay.
Good.
That's, that's a good thing.
My question I have is, we have that animal, um, we have a fund, it's not a fund, but...
Kennel fund.
The kennel fund, was it specific kennel fund, is that what, was a voted fund, or we just started raising money for it?
Yeah, we just started raising money, I don't even see it listed.
It's, uh, 'cause it's in the five hundred, it's in a different account.
Oh, is that where it is?
Yeah, it's not a budgeted line, but I'm just wondering, 'cause there's money in that, and we're never gonna build a kennel.
I'd be glad to talk to him about it.
Yeah, let's talk to him if we got, got some funds.
What I'm saying is, we can use that money.
He could use like a couple of those, um, you know, that I'm talking about, those, yep, with the eagle things in there and get them off the dog chains and...
When it's big enough, he could even use a calf pen, things that size, some of these animals.
I'll talk to, I'll talk to him about it tomorrow.
Does he do cats, too?
No, we don't do cats.
I don't think so. But, but we just wanna make sure that, for the few days he has, that they're out of the weather.
Mm-hmm, right.
Okay, so we don't need to add anything to this?
We have some money.
Eighteen hundred there for those expenses?
Well, if we, if we need, if we feel that we need to spend any money, we can use out of the kennel fund.
Right, yes, what I'm saying is, is we have money to give these animals a home, yes.
Okay, good.
Okay, good.
So we won't change anything there, we'll leave it like it is?
Okay.
Health officer.
He, part of his animal control expenses is his cellphone, and there's a, there's a monthly charge, so that, that goes in there.
Okay, boarding fees, we got that. Is that enough, a thousand?
Well, I thought he wasn't supposed to be boarding there, other than for emergencies, we did contract with the kennel.
So, it's just these boarding fees for the kennel?
No, they, you've been paying him.
Well, yeah, which is fine, if he's gonna keep him for two, so he's keeping for two or three days, find the owner, the owner's supposed to take him away. He's not supposed to keep him for a month.
Right, so a thousand's good there.
Okay. Leave it the way it is. Wages, health officer.
Um, Jim said leave all this stuff the same.
I'd like to make the health officer get three thousand, six hundred dollars, three hundred a month. I think it's well worth it.
So make it what, three thousand, six hundred?
A, a year, you mean?
Yeah, a year. Yeah, a month, he'd have, he'd add a month.
Me and you and Ellen, I'm telling you.
That's why we have you, that's why we have you people here.
Keep an eye on me, 'cause I'm just number happy tonight, man. That's why I'm trying to pop numbers in, I want you guys to take it home and read it before your meeting.
Three thousand, six hundred, okay, that takes care of that. Emergency coordinator, leave that a thousand?
Yep.
Expenses, delinquent tax collector.
The wage goes in, the wage comes out.
Right.
That's fine. Okay. Forced fire expenses. We had an actual four thousand?
Yeah, an actual fire.
We did, we had that, that was a couple of years ago, that was one up behind, uh, Palmer's Farm.
So is five hundred enough, do we just take the hit if there is a fire?
That's what we did last night, yes.
That's what we've done.
Okay, well, we did it five, streetlights, electricity, I thought that was going down, it did, fifteen.
Well, I wouldn't count on it, your net metering is just kicking in, and you're gonna be making some disbursements to Huzik Hydro.
So at fifteen?
I would put it at fifteen, that was my best guess.
Versus the eighteen?
Yeah.
Okay with me. Now, the transfer station we went over with Tom.
Right, 'cause we didn't change anything more there.
So we left it, uh, and we were fine with where it was and he was.
Well, we were hoping to hear on his ideas for the building there, he wanted to, be able to get enough, get anything back on that.
What building?
Well, he was gonna get two containers, did he do that?
Two containers.
Did he get a price on them?
I remember you gave him a price.
I got them priced at thirty-five a piece for twenty-foot containers.
I talked to him afterwards about a couple other ideas, and he was supposed to get back with us.
What do we have in here for his building fund?
He's got money in the fund already. He has building fund at fifty-seven thousand, and equipment fund is fifty-six thousand, he's got money.
He's got money.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll leave it where it is. And the rest of ballot articles, guys.
Rest of ballot articles.
And then you go to the nine hundred.
Yeah, we got it, yeah.
You see, your new ballot article was five hundred dollars, and you'll see B C A A, child abuse.
Oh, I...
Might want to capitalize that one, yeah.
I just saw that, yeah?
I saw it, but it's okay. Uh, and then your twenty thousand that we're just doing right now. So...
Was there anything other than that, that was added to this?
No, no, there was not.
So, the fire department's in?
So the fire department's in.
And all these were, and all these were okay with what the figures were on here, they, uh...
Yes.
Didn't, I'm just looking at the youth baseball and stuff like that, they stay the same every year.
They have to stay the same, or they have to repetition.
Yep, okay. Okay.
No, got nothing on the fireworks.
So next year, if the community fireworks wants to put in some money, they have to repetition it?
Repetition, yes.
I didn't think you realized this happened.
That's 'cause they didn't put any in this year?
He didn't put in any, he didn't put any in last year.
No, he got a donation.
Remember the runners gave him the money?
So he's not gonna do anything.
They didn't do it last year, they didn't do it this year.
Yeah, no.
So we've seen a decrease in some of those.
Right.
We've got that.
Well, you have three thousand from the senior, five thousand from, uh, the fireworks, I think it was five thousand, something like, twenty-five hundred for the fireworks, excuse me. So it's fifty-five, but now you're going back up. One time.
What about all these miscellaneous and unclaimed property, all that stuff, we don't?
Where are you?
Where are you?
We're down to the miscellaneous and going down to the bottom.
Yeah, and you have your contingency of fifty.
A lot of these, um, items are, are dues that are based on population, and there's, they send it to us, like Bennington Regional Commission, this is what your contribution will be. And you have to add it to your budget, which has been done. That's one example.
We have Oak Hill Cemetery, poor lots.
The website, the website's under here too.
Yes, the website.
Is that enough money to be?
Yes, that's what she said.
Okay.
For now, we'll see how it goes, we're still.
Okay, go right down, miscellaneous expenses, from unclaimed property, uh, general expense.
Generator.
Generator, I'm sorry, five hundred. Safety inspection. County tax, yeah, can't get away from that, Glee Brent to the school.
What does county tax actually pay for?
Goes to the county, Bennington County, all towns contribute and pay their tax.
Is that towards like court system?
Goes for the county expenses.
But do we know what those are, we don't know what those are?
I don't have them itemized, I don't know, they're just, it's all the towns, all the towns, in the county pay.
They sending you a bill, and this is what it is? Oak Hill Cemetery, poor lots, local agreement tax payment.
That's money in, money out.
Okay. Timber cell fund, we did nothing, Bennington County Regional Commission. Boy, they took a jump.
Yes.
They took a jump?
They're char, they're charging you an additional thousand dollars for the economic development piece that you were notified of. Each town, again, based on population.
And then they turn around and charge us when they wanna help us with things, okay, I understand.
And we're putting into the contingency?
Two thousand, we always, yeah, we put fifty in every time.
We got fifty in.
You got fifty down the bottom.
But we didn't last year because why?
Yes, we did, yes, we did, you used it, those are the budget adjustments we do in June.
Oh, okay.
Mis retirement, yeah, from unemployment insurance, workforce comp, insurance company, short-term.
So contingency's supposed to be around five percent of our budget?
Uh, website.
Should we be adjusting it accordingly if the budget goes up?
It should.
It's my feelings.
Is that contingency?
Yes.
What's this, what, two, two and a half percent?
I think at one short time, it was five percent.
I know that the school was talking about it, it was so high, they were gonna lower the thing. Not, not that that's what the recommendation is, that they talked about.
I wouldn't lower it, sure, no, fifty thousand isn't much of a cushion.
Obviously, if we use the-
Well, yeah, I guess we were lucky it was there, but I'm just throwing it out there.
I mean, in the general fund, it's not so bad, and the road fund.
Yeah, maybe we have in the road, put some digits in?
Fifty?
Fifty.
Same way.
It's all we've ever done.
This year, I think we'll probably lose, yeah, I'm okay with that.
See where it goes.
See what happens.
Your auditor, your outside auditor may tell you that you need to make an adjustment.
I think that's why we added it, didn't it, because the auditors told us to have it?
Yes, at that time, it was probably three percent.
Anything else on this, guys? She'll punch that, put the stuff in that we talked about. And then, uh, Thursday, we can look it over, delve this in the road, uh, in between that time, take a look at them, and just in case there is anything else.
I'm gonna give you all a clean one.
Thank you, and basically, we'll, uh, go from there, let's see what the differences, oh my, oh my.
This is mine, I knew we were sharing, I looked over and knew I had yours, but I, I was willing to share.
About fifty thousand. So it's not bad. Got when we know what twenty thousand of it is. So, I mean, that's not bad, true.
No, it's a ballot article, so.
Yeah, so I think we're fine. Okay, so get rid of this.
I'll keep in mind until we go over the figures again, just to make sure.
The things you wrote on you, yeah.
We'll put all the garbage together.
These three things.
Got anything old, gross, anything old in yours, you wanna lighten your load, not get confused.
Transfer my numbers, so.
You won't have to transfer your numbers, cause you're getting new ones. You end up at, by the time you walk around with a lot of printouts, and you're like, which is which?
Yes.
You gotta try to go by the day.
There's one with all your changes, okay?
Everybody else has things to start. Just keep your fund down, so you need your fund base.
Did you, did you do me?
Did I do you, I did, I licked it.
Thanks.
Yeah, these are garbage.
I did, and I did, I licked it.
Oh, man.
Who was telling you?
This white must be sticky, right?
Oh, you're good.
So these two one-eighteens, we can-
So this is the only one we need.
Yes.
Yes, you can, unless you wanna keep your expenditure report, I would, I, I'm hanging on to it, it hasn't changed much.
If you want an updated expenditure report for Thursday or something, I can get you one, here's an extra one.
Comparative budget, I have the one from one-twenty-three and twelve-twenty-eight, so I can get rid of the-
Yes. You want the stuff we did tonight, and that's it, basically, so go through, please, and look at all the revenues, should have no negative or positive in front of it, and expenditures all should have negatives.
Well, that's for us.
Make sure I didn't do add a zero, leave out a zero.
Okay.
Just double-check these numbers, okay? If you get time, that would be great, the more eyes, the better.
No, who's gonna get all of that?
I know, we're never adjourned yet.
No.
Cause-
Me.
Oh, I wonder if this one, oh, you know what, I bet you I didn't add the twenty thousand in that one yet, I hit the line, but I didn't put it in.
Which one, the, for the ballot article?
Yeah, let me, I don't go. Nope, I put it in, I did.
I didn't get that far yet.
Yep, I don't know if it's gonna- I just didn't remember doing it, so, but I did.
Did you guys officially adjourn?
Nope, not yet.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
You're gonna adjourn for adjourn, or you?
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready, unless you guys-
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those, favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.